I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I will call the organizational meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is the appointment of John Olson for county attorney to fulfill the balance of the term in December 31st, 2026. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion.
Steve moves?
I'll second.
Second.
Dave seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. John, do you want to come forward for your oath, please?
John Olson, if you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Minnesota, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Hubbard County Attorney in the jurisdiction of Hubbard County to the best of your judgment and ability.
I do.
Welcome, John. Thank you. All right, next we will have the oath of office for the newly elected officials, which would be Steve and I. Are there any appointments? Not any appointments?
That was the appointment.
Oh, okay. Got it. All right.
Okay, right hands again. You, Charlene Christensen, and Steve Karenin, do solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Minnesota, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Hubbard County Commissioner in the jurisdiction of Hubbard County to the best of your judgment and abilities. Thanks, guys.
Okay, we now will have the election of the board chair. Are there any nominations for the board chair?
I'll nominate Steve.
All right.
I'll second that.
Well, we gotta do three.
Oh, yeah.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
Okay, so not... First and second.
Okay, and then I asked.
And then you asked three times.
Okay, so it was right. Okay.
Just pull your mic down.
So all in favor of Steve for board chair signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Steve, it's yours.
All right. Now we will, I will take nominations for the vice chair.
I'll nominate Dave.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? All right, with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right. Very good. Now we will move on to meeting procedures and bylaws. Any changes or discussion?
Mr. Chair, there have been no changes other than just updates for the year.
Yes, my address is incorrect.
Okay.
So that should be changed.
We will fix that.
And then I noticed, I believe it was in this section somewhere that I, that the auditor was still listed. And that should probably be changed, the contact anyway.
Yep.
The phone number will still be the same.
And I'd like to just thank for the red lines, so I can see what minor changes were made.
Yes, that makes a difference. All right, if there are no other corrections to that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the bylaws.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion passed. We have before us the schedule of the board meeting dates for 2025. Are there any changes or corrections to this?
Chair, I'll move to approve.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
We will likely have another move in December when we know when the AMC meeting is, but for now...
But that can be published.
Yes.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. We have before us the review for the legal newspaper for the county. Is there any changes or corrections? We only received one, so... I guess if there's nothing else to be added, I will, or no questions about it, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, any more further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. All right, so that is the end of the organizational...
Well, we'll handle the committee list under organizational and then we'll move to the regular.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, I'm sorry, I clicked over the top of it. All right, so we have the committee list. Are there any changes or corrections to the committee list?
We will obviously make the modifications to the auditor treasurer as we have more information. We'll change that at this point. We'll update chair and vice chair on the standing committees. We have identified the labor negotiating committee, but in the past, the labor negotiating committee was the personnel committee meeting, or was the personnel committee. The last time we needed a labor negotiating committee, it was the personnel committee. And so that's my thought for, in the off years, we don't need a labor negotiating committee. So in the years when we do, if it were just named as the members of the personnel committee, it might be easier knowing that 2025 is going to be a negotiating year. Our contracts run through the end of this year. And the other item that I would mention is the general government meeting. At the end of this meeting and the administrator report, I'm going to be talking about hiring a consultant to help us identify opportunities within the auditor treasurer office and to work with our staff. And one of those, the function, one of the functions there would very likely be having a stand, an ad hoc committee to have some commissioners involved in updates relative to that. And it might be easier to just name the general government as the committee for those updates. Because they will generally be along the lines of financial operations, policy operations, budget operations, which is what we would have the general government committee do. So rather than name that, we just think about that as we identify the members for the general government and the personnel and the public safety and transportation and then, so I just, I throw that out there. In my mind, we have three standing committees. The fact that we're listing five just means that we have other dates when we regularly meet.
And we can figure out after the meeting. I need to be put on a committee somewhere.
Yeah, and I don't know if you want to have conversation of how you want to handle running through this committee list. If you want to establish that today, if you've had conversations or know what's, but it, for the standing and the AMC appointments, they want us to turn in our finalized list by Friday. But I, we don't need any more information from you as long as your AMC appointments are, they want to know your AMC appointments too. So I don't know if we could identify those or what you would prefer to do. If you've thought about committees, you want others, other committees, outside committees that you'd like to change or exchange. This is always a moving document and obviously we can edit it anytime we need to, but...
Any thoughts or ideas on any changes that you'd propose?
So labor would be now personnel combined with that?
That would be my suggestion. We've identified it separately, but in 2022, it was, it was the personnel committee.
So to get you, Char, on one of those standing committees, would you be opposed to being on public safety? I mean, I could go off public safety because Steve wants to stay on.
I'm not opposed. It's probably not my best wheelhouse, but...
Yeah, it's a variety of things, though.
Okay. Because we're gonna, we're gonna have...
That's the only thing I can see that would make sense here.
Who would we identify for personnel?
Tom and myself.
I'd kind of like to still be on that one because especially with labor negotiations. Because that, more than likely, I'll be reelected as the chair of Kitsigami Regional Library and their negotiations are up and I'm the chief spokesman on behalf, the chair is the chief spokesman on behalf of the library if that happens. And more experience would be, you know, more experience that I can get, the better it'd be.
So I don't know any other way to do it based on the information. I'd have to go down to just one committee, which is, I'm fine with, so that Char's got a committee to be on.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to be flexible every time we do a board chair and a vice chair because they will automatically move to, so committees will continue to change.
So you would, the general government would be?
My only committee.
The chair and the vice chair.
Yep.
Even though it's the chair, the chair and Commissioner Delahunt, personnel would stay as Ted and Tom. And then public safety would be Commissioner Christensen and continue to be Commissioner Chair, Chair Karenin. Okay.
And that could cover us for a couple of years then?
Yeah, potentially. Yep.
Well, it'll cover us for one, yeah.
Could cover.
Because next year, if you're board chair, then a vice chair will, yeah. Okay.
Structurize the general government as the chair. Well, we do, we do have it identified as the county board vice chair.
Yeah, we changed that this year.
Okay, all right.
The only other alternative I see is that if I trade with David and be, and be put on public safety and transportation and then Char can be put on personnel committee.
That could work too.
Yeah, that, that works well. I was on personnel until I became board chair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And transportation is a little bit in my wheelhouse.
Okay, that, actually, that would be a better fit, I think, with our skill sets.
And labor negotiations, one, that took something like 23 meetings the last time in two months. Yeah, it's going to take a lot of time.
From September to December, it, it took quite a few, quite a number of meetings.
That's why you had to consider that too.
Yeah, and that's what I'm thinking about too is, I mean, in my former job, I used to negotiate with insurance companies every day. So I'm thinking with labor negotiations, it wouldn't be much of a stretch.
Public safety and transportation is the first Friday of the month that that makes any difference for deciding.
It has been, but it could be changed.
And we could change it.
It could be changed if that was an issue.
Ted, do you want to stay on the benefits committee or do you want, that kind of went hand in hand with personnel? Because that mean, you sure can. It just meets periodically.
Benefits, we met twice this year?
And if you want to stay on it, go ahead.
Okay. We'll make it easy for today.
Okay.
Maybe we will clean up the rest of the committees and take any comments that you have about specific committees. But I haven't heard anybody wanting to swap things, like where they are with the library and the Mississippi headwaters and the rest of the, of the items.
So to clarify the conversation, then Ted would move to public safety and transportation and Char would move into personnel committee?
And you're still...
Ted would be taking my spot on public safety.
Yeah, and then you're still okay with public safety for AMC?
Yes.
I'm, I'm public safety.
No, you're transportation.
Transportation. Okay, that's right. Correct.
Are we good with the AMC designations? I know you're not all necessarily... They're not your favorite ones to attend, but it...
I like mine. Environmental.
Let's see. I guess I'm okay. I'm on three of them, I see, but AMC, agri and rural development. I don't know if I've ever been.
The, the, the standing ones for AMC again are environment, natural resource, general government, health and human services, public safety and transportation. The Indian Affairs, agri, rural development and broadband are really kind of ad hoc or at-large committees. I don't even know if they're currently standing right now, so we'll modify that list relative to AMC's actual list. But the, but the five standing committees they have, they have five intentionally because most counties have five commissioners, so they would like one on, one at each.
Wasn't the auditor delegate by bylaws for AMC? Or is that, am I thinking?
No, it's not by bylaws.
Okay, so I'm thinking of MCIT.
Probably MCIT, but not by bylaws.
All right.
So we're good with everything else? And we'll... I mean, these, where these, these are highlighted, we'll identify if somebody was reappointed for another term. And I'm guessing that's likely the case in some of these.
For those on extension committee choices, said she's, would be happy either way. If you want to get somebody else, that would be fine with her too.
It's, it's difficult to find someone to serve on, on some of these committees from the public.
She said so, do it, you know, do it again, but if you want to get somebody else, she'd be fine with that too.
The real trick is if we can find somebody from your district, Steve, that would serve, then we'd make an adjustment. But if we can't, I mean, these folks are willing to serve again, it's...
I keep poking around, but I don't get any responses, so...
Yeah, there's three of them from District Three.
Yes. They're all very enthusiastic about the position, so I really hate to lose any of them because they really seem to enjoy it.
When a resident calls you or emails you with a concern, maybe you could ask that person then if they're interested in.
Sure. All right, are there any other proposed changes?
HRA, EDA. We don't have anything there.
Yeah, we do. Just look further after the crossout. All of our names have been put in place.
It's messy, but all your names are in there.
Would somebody else be interested in Historical Society? They don't meet very often, but whenever they do meet, I have always had something else.
Well, conflicts?
Yeah.
And you can let me know when you're, you can stay on if you want and let me know if you're not going to go. I don't get notices. Did they send you an email or how do you?
I don't get, actually, I'd, whenever I'd find out about their meetings, I'd have to go over there and get their brochure and they've got it on. They always have a program scheduled at the same time as the meeting.
Oh, I see. Okay.
All right, any other proposed changes? Other questions?
I'll move to approve the committee list.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Now Commissioner, we'll move to a regular agenda.
All right, so we'll call a meeting to order. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
We are going to pull item nine A. Because they are doing some, some continuing review relative to the legal description of the property being considered.
Okay, all right.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Right, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, motion carried. Public input. Is there anyone here that would like to have any public input? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there any, anything you want to pull or discuss on the consent agenda? All right, and we'll entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion? Right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? All right, motion carried.
And then, Mr. Chair, the items under finance would have been on the consent agenda if they would have been completed in time. But they are, they are not, so the warrants and claims for auditors, office and human services are presented. You could vote on those individually or as one motion.
Is there any preference if we do them individually or, or as a group?
They're always in the consent and agenda before.
Okay, all right. So is there a motion to approve all three of those items?
I'll move, all three.
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. County employee recognition.
Good morning.
Morning, Mike.
For county employee recognition today, in the auditor treasurer's department, we have Kay Rave, county auditor treasurer, recognized for service from January 12th, 2015 to December 27th, 2024. As a such, county attorney, John Olson, county attorney, began on January 1st, 2025 to fill the unexpired term. In human services, Matthew Dianco, transit driver, began the part-time position on December 23rd, 2024. And Kathy Douglas, social worker, began the full-time position on January 6th.
Welcome. Great, thank you, Mike. All right, highway survey. What do we have today?
Morning, Ian.
Morning.
I have a few items and there was one late addition to the agenda. First one, make sure my stack is the same, is to approve a quote for a hydraulic puller for our sign truck. And then there's a jaw clamp that will be used as well in part, as part of the quote. Our setup that we have now, they've had to retrofit and it's cracking and the welds aren't holding anymore. So it's, there's not enough hydraulic oomph, I will say, to pull the signs out of the ground. So this will attach to the front of our truck and we'll be able to pull the signs out easier. And so the quote came in from Burt's Equipment for $13,970.
I'll move the low quote.
I'll second.
Right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Thank you. And the second item I have is to approve a purchase of a mini excavator, which we included in our 2025 budget. A new piece of equipment for us. It's not replacing anything and we plan on using this for culvert and cleanouts, help pull beaver dams, just to have an extra piece of equipment in our fleet for utilization. The low quote for this piece of machinery came in from Road Machinery and Supplies and it is for $71,470.
I'll make a motion to accept the low quote.
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Thank you. The next piece is a quote for a new tractor, which will be used up at the North Shop and this will replace possibly two units at our North Shop. I was just asked by the guys if we could retrofit those two units to make one, one more unit that would work with an underbody mower. So we'll take a look at that and see if it's feasible and if it's needed at the North Shop. But this tractor is replacing ones that are aged, they're rusting, they're kind of off, obsolete now that for what our purposes and needs are up there. So the low quote came in for a KSIH tractor at Titan Machinery in Fargo for $145,216.48.
Is this including with mowing equipment attached?
We have the mowers already. We'll just plan on using our own ones. It does include hydraulic attachments for a new broom that we'll be purchasing later in the year or as soon as we get our quotes back for that.
All right, thank you.
Does this operate a snow blower or two?
It can, yep. With those hydraulic attachments on the front, it can operate snow blowers, which we purchased a large one from the city last year, so we just don't have any snow to try it out this year. We're waiting.
So is, is the preference to go to all boom mowers at some point?
Not necessarily. It, because our ditches vary so much in the county. There's a lot of narrow, steep ones and there's a lot of the four to one wide slopes. So the boom ones are nice for the narrow, steep, but the toe behinds are nice for the wider ditches. So kind of hand in hand of what, what we need.
That's where you're at, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the low quote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, and the late addition to the agenda was approving a resolution for an application for active transportation funds. This is, I'm hoping to use if we are awarded on our Casal One project next year, which is in the city of Park Rapids. It's, it's funding that can be utilized for exactly what it says, active transportation, which is Peds, bicycles, whatnot. And we're working with Apex Engineering with the city. They're the designer on the plan and we're planning on redoing the sidewalks, installing new ADA alignment on the sidewalks, curb and gutter, and then having a designated bike lane on that road similar to the other streets downtown. So that's something that that funding can be used for.
Are you going to widen the road then? That's not a very wide road.
It will be widened. They'll be, to meet today's standards, I think they're planning on 12-foot lanes with a five-foot bike, bike lane on the side there and then having the sidewalk in the same place on the, it's on the west side of the road right now.
So are property owners paid then for?
They are if we have to end up purchasing. I believe right now they have enough width of right-of-way to be able to fit it within the existing footprint. Because then there'll be storm sewer added to the road. There's no storm sewer and then the city wants to replace some utilities at that time too. So it'll look more like a, what we call an urban section versus a rural section is what it is right now.
I can think of a couple of buildings that are fairly close to the road.
Yeah, it's a very tight section of road and it'll be interesting to see how they, how they plan on. We did do a resolution earlier, or late last year, I guess, to eliminate parking on the road. So they can't park along Casal One anymore, which will help with the narrowness of the road.
Is the road only going to be done through the city limits?
Yes, yep. It's a mile length up. Yes, yep. It's a mile length up past those apartment buildings on the north there, and yeah.
I'll move to approve the resolution in support of applying for the active transportation funds.
I'll check it.
All right, any more discussion? I, I do have one question. When would we anticipate getting an answer if we're awarded the funds?
The application is due next Friday, and they said mid-February is when, it's, it's a beast of an application, so there's gonna be a lot to go through, but
It still allows us enough time to get everything put together.
Yeah, yep.
If we get the money or we don't get the money.
Right, yep. So I sent it yesterday, the application to Apex, and they'll help. As the designer, they know the details that are needed in that application, and we'll kind of work together to get it submitted, and essentially, the resolution is needed to say that the board understands that any additional cost beyond the active transportation grant will be paid, which we will regardless, so you just need to say that in professional writing.
Oh, we have a motion in a second, so all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, natural resources.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Congratulations, Mr. Chair. First off, we have a a request from our department to review and approve a two thousand twenty-five seedling quote for the production of thirty thousand white pine seedlings. This is to, for two thousand twenty-six delivery, so they have to know how many we need a year ahead of time so they can start growing them. It's the only quote we got, it's a reputable company that we've worked with for many years, PRT. And it's, we haven't planted many white pine in the past, and it's, it's kind of a, getting to be a more of a rare species that are planted, so it's really, it's really good to see that we have some areas to plant some of this white pine, so we're looking for approval to accept the quote.
That was, that was gonna be my question, cause I don't remember us planting white pines before. And I know that, well, along with red pine, that you're like to browse on them, especially the new seedlings.
Yep, yep, so they definitely need to be budcapped.
I was just gonna say, so there's some precautions that you'll take?
Oh, yeah, yep. We budcap for at least two years and
Will they, will they come budcap, or do you need?
No, we do that, we hire that out too.
Yeah, I remember those quotes, okay.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's, it's, these little baby trees are like candy to deer, so we try to protect them as much as we can.
And then you've already, obviously, you've already got places where you're gonna plant the other stuff.
Yep, so we, we, the steps kinda go, we cut the stand, we dis-trench one year, and then the next year we'll plant, so it's kind of a two, two-year process.
So we'll be trenching this year, I'm assuming?
Yep, yep, yep.
Thank you.
How many acres?
Oh, I don't know if I have it in here, but usually we do around seven hundred, seven or eight hundred trees per acre, so yeah, so it'd be about fifty acres, sixty acres, something like that, so.
Ten by ten spacing or something like that?
It's usually about eight by eight. Yep. Yeah, the I believe the, the dis-trench on the back of the, the machine, they use is eight-foot spacing, so, yep.
Wonder, how long, how long before those are harvestable?
So first thinning can happen around age thirty.
A long-term deal.
Yeah, it is, and like I said at the last board meeting, you can manage pine, red and white pine for as long as you want, pretty much. Unless a disease or windstorm hits it.
Beautiful tree, though.
Yeah.
I'd like to see more of them.
Yep. Yeah, Aspen's good, but you need a little mix within it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Right, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Aye? Opposed? All right.
Thank you. Second item is a, a request to approve resolutions for Hubbard County to sponsor three local clubs that maintain trails in Hubbard County. The first club is the Northwoods Riders OHV Club, they're in northern Hubbard County. The Park, Paul Bunyan Forest Riders OHM Club, they're towards Akeley, and the Timberland Dirt Devils ATV Club, they're towards Akeley also. These include the Schoolcraft Trail Systems, the Martin O Trail Systems, and the Round River Trail System, and these clubs need a local governmental sponsor to receive funding from the state, and there's no cost to the, the county. It's just us acting as a fiscal agent. So we're looking, these, we're looking to get approval to, to continue sponsoring these clubs.
I'll move to approve.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second. I'm kind of curious a little, last, last year, I, I don't know, I can't imagine them spending a whole lot of money grooming trails last year.
No.
And the same thing this year, so I'm assuming the money just
It does get built up in their account so they can put it towards machinery or fixing broken items.
Yeah, fixing trails and stuff.
I know, we noticed a lot of trail clearing, or cleaning up along the trails, branches, and logs sticking out, so.
And most of this is ATV motorcycle off-road trails, so it's summertime activities, not wintertime activities.
We do
It could be enjoying now.
We do sponsor a couple snowmobile clubs, and I, I believe I'll be coming to ask for approval to sponsor them too.
So these snowmobile clubs aren't losing money when there's no snow like this?
I'm sure they're, I'm sure they're upset they're not able to groom, but
They don't, don't get paid by so many miles that they groom?
They do, and if they don't use it, so these sponsorships are two-year sponsorships. So if they don't use the money, they can turn it, or the, the state will take it back. But if they have items like clearing trails that they can, they can, say they put hours into, they, they, they can still receive the money, so. I know a lot of them are working in the, the summertime to try to keep that funding.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kinda, it's too bad for even machinery, you wanna keep that stuff going, otherwise it sits in it. Bad stuff happens.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Thanks for that. Last item, and before I wanna go into this one, I wanna say that we had an auction, timber auction yesterday. I'll come to the next meeting with the results, but it went very well. Surprisingly, there's a couple mills that are acting a little goofy right now, they're taking, they're shutting down for increments of time, and that had us a little bit worried, but still, the, the prices were pretty good, so, all twelve sales sold. So this, this item is to review and approve the terms date and appraise values for a two thousand twenty, or a, a February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five tax-forfeited land auction. We have eighteen tracks that will be offered on there, two of the parcels are two thousand twenty-four forfeitures. So with new forfeitures, we need to, we need to do our best effort to offer them within about six months. And if they don't sell, we need to offer them, try to offer them thirty days, or as soon as we can after the initial sale, so it's, it might be a pretty reoccurring process, this land sale stuff, so. We'll try to the best we can. Sixteen parcels are re-offers on this list, and they are reduced to minimum bid. Hopefully, we'll sell a lot of them.
So Corey, because you adjusted the price, but they're, they're coming back on again, could someone, someone couldn't come into the office and offer the new price?
No, legally, we still need to offer at public sale.
They will be available over the counter after the second public sale.
Yep, yep. And then some of these parcels, they're so low that I don't think we'll come back to offer them at auction, we'll just keep them over the counter until someone comes and picks them up.
Well, and some of them, like that, that one little strip or, I mean, who's gonna buy?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a waste of time for us to keep coming and offering them, but we'll do our legal obligation, offering them what we, when we need to offer them.
Can, can you explain on number seventeen? Offered three times, revert to Minnesota statute.
Yep, so after the, after the second time, if they don't, still don't get a, a bid after the second offering, they revert to statute, the normal statute, two eighty-two statute. So we can actually, if we want to, we could actually make them conservation land and keep them forever, but a lot of times I don't think that's gonna happen. It's gonna be the little slivers that don't ever sell.
There's also the, the possibility that a public authority could request them.
Yep.
Yeah.
When they go back, when they go back to the old rules.
That's true too.
So
Yep.
Once they've been offered twice and not sold, then they go back to the old rules, is basically what that says.
Yep. But it's a, it's a whole new process, it's, it's a learning game for all of us, I think, every county out there, so. It's, it's gonna take a little bit to learn, but we'll do the best, best we can.
Those first, number one and number two, the first offering, those are tax-forfeited?
Yep, they forfeited this fall, early falls.
I was looking at the Aerial for number one, and it looks like they're, I wonder if there could be a boundary issue there because the adjacent owner, you know, it looks like using it himself.
Yeah, and you hope that, you hope that, they might be interested, but a lot of times they're probably not, but they, that road actually splits the two ownerships. And I was gonna try to get up there and kind of tell him that it's for sale, and if he could move his stuff, his trailer or whatever over. But it's a nice piece of property with a river, so it's, yeah, I don't think we'll, we'll have to offer that one twice, but the other two thousand twenty-four one is a little sliver of land, so that one might be a little tougher to, tougher to get rid of. But some of these along the lakes, we've been offering at four or five auctions, and we just keep lowering them, like the one on Boulder Lake, and I, I think we're at a point where we just, we shouldn't offer it at any lower price. Keep it over the counter as long as we can. Same with the Shallow Lake one, that's down to a hundred fifty thousand, I think. That's a, that's a heck of a deal for a property on two different lakes.
Too bad it got separated like it did the little tracks within, that happened.
Yep. Yeah, so I'm working with John Olson, the attorney, to to pan out some issues on the Boulder Lake parcel. Jonathan, the, the past attorney, he, he agreed that there, there, we believe there is public access, but we wanna look into it again to make sure that we're still on the same, same page, so. Yeah, so.
Is there any more questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Also move.
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion then?
Is the auction at one on, on the?
Yeah, yep, on February twenty-first.
All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right, motion carried.
All right, thank you. And I just wanna say, we've been getting a lot of positive remarks for our management plan from other counties, so pretty good to hear. They want me to build theirs, and I said, no, no way.
I need done.
Yep, I'm done with that, for another ten years.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Josh?
It was a big deal to get that done.
Oh, man, yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so the first item I have, under nine B, is to review and approve quote for packer truck for solid waste. So this packer truck is part of our MPCA organics grant initiative that we're working on. So this packer truck would be used to collect non-residential organics in Beltrami and Hubbard Counties. We obtained quotes under the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract. And the low quote we received was from Sanitation Products out of Fargo, North Dakota, for three hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty cents. Both of the trucks, I think, did you guys get an updated quote sheet?
From Northland?
Passed around, or?
In an email yesterday, it was an attack. Oh, yeah, you, yeah.
Okay, I had an update, updated price from Northland Truck Sales, so some of their specs changed, but so their, Northland, the second quote was actually three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and that was for a freightliner as well. So that quote had changed a little bit, but the low quote was still sanitation products. And they were actually, I had in the original quote sheet, a twenty twenty-four freightliner, it's actually a twenty twenty-five M2 chassis, and that has a Labri pendulum packer. And the difference between kind of these trucks and like the trucks we use for recycling right now, this would be a side loader truck, and then it has, you know, additional seals, the seals are higher on there for the liquid material that we anticipate with organics, so it's kind of more specifically geared towards the organic collection. The lead time on both of these are, unfortunately, with our grant, are out there quite a ways, but we have, I think, two and a half years on our grant, so we should still have a little bit of time to get this truck in action and, and see our grant through, but the lead time on the sanitation products is about three hundred days on last, last time I checked, so.
How are we collecting organics at this point in time?
So this is all new, so we don't, the only thing we had to do for organics now is like we have a roll-off container at the South Transfer Station, and we have a couple roll-offs in some area schools that we haul in roll-off containers, so. But this truck will go to a cart-type system for businesses, you know, that we can get signed up in schools and other, you know, organizations.
Has there been a lot of interest in local businesses?
We haven't, you know, we haven't really kicked that off yet, so it's, you know, it's all getting kind of the equipment lined up, and then we kick off the education outreach and reaching out to to businesses and other organizations, so.
All right.
Hopefully, that'll be successful.
Yeah, we're hoping so, and it'll, it's gonna be a big initiative in our whole six-county partnership, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the low, number one low quote.
Right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Right, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
All right, and the second item I have is to review and approve quote for a semi-truck. So this is for just using around our site at our South Transfer Station. We received a quote to purchase a two thousand six Volvo Day Cab that we learned about from Prairie Lake Seed. We utilize these trucks again just in our yard to pull the semi-trailers out of the transfer station around back. So in the past, we've utilized, the last time, well, historically, you know, going back before when I started, the contractors used to provide us these trailers to use. When I took over and we started a new, our new partnership with Beltrami County for hauling, we purchased some used semis to do this, pulling the trailers around. The last semi we purchased, you know, I think was a two thousand six as well. The motor is having issues where it's not worth fixing, so just looking at, you know, not purchasing new equipment, but purchasing good equipment that can, you know, hopefully last for a few years, and I think it's, it makes sense for what we're doing to not invest too much money in these, so. We learned about this truck, it looks like it'd fit our needs, and we had a quote for forty-five hundred dollars from Prairie Lake Seed in town.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Environmental Services.
Good morning. One item for the board this morning, and that's a conditional use application by friend Laurie McGregor, it's for a twenty-one It's for a twenty-one-site RV campground on, uh, eleven, well, on a non-repairing lot on Eleventh Crow Wing Lake in the city of Akeley. Uh, it's right next to the city's campground. This originally went through a CUP process three years ago, but the applicants did not obtain their operating permit or comply with the conditions of the permit. So that permit was, uh, deemed null and void, which led to their reapplying for essentially the same thing with a few minor tweaks, uh, which would include a, oh, it's basically a pole barn or like a hay shed, a pole barn without walls, that they would in partially enclose a portion thereof for a shower house and a bathroom for their guests, and then the rest of it would be like an open pavilion. And then there's a small structure, uh, for housing water supply equipment that they've added, and there was clarification by the Planning Commission on the dimensions of, uh, sheds and decks or platforms that could be placed at the campsites. So the Planning Commission unanimously recommends approval, and they've got ten conditions that they recommend along with uh, findings of fact for the board's consideration. Uh, there wasn't much for public comment, other than, uh, the city clerk for Akeley, uh, Christie Cath commented as far as, uh, some of the city's concerns relative to their campground being next to the, uh, this campground and some of this campground's guests apparently utilizing the city campground facilities such as their shower house, bathroom, and, uh, claims of accessing the lake through the city campground, but whether that's, I don't know that we're gonna know the full story on that, um, but at least the applicants were made aware of those concerns, and I don't know that they had heard them previously.
And they're putting their own bathroom, shower facilities.
That should help with, with what was alleged to have been occurring.
I, I think they had a misunderstanding of the whole process when they, the first time they came in, um, because they never came in and actually activated their permit, and I think the question was even asked this time, well, do we have to come back in two years? So I think they misunderstood how everything just moves forward. Well, it's a one-time thing, I think they just missed that. And the concrete is poured already for this, uh, pavilion-type structure that they have, and it's all hooked to, uh, city water and sewer. So that's all been done. No, it's just the construction part of it, and I think most of this is, I think their desire is to have seasonals, not, that's why they want the decks and the little accessory building and things like that, so. That's what I recall from the, from the, uh, planning commission meeting.
Yeah, my working with these, uh, folks, I don't think there's any ill intent on their part. They're very nice and big hearts, and I think that led to some of the issues that were shared at the hearing, uh, due to the, the big hearts wanting to help out some folks in need, uh, that were causing those issues, but I think that the Planning Commission made every effort to try to communicate to them of, yes, you need to get your operating permit this time, and you will need to get permits for those decks and platforms if you wanna install any of those at the campsites.
This is the second one, and within a year, I think, that the CUPU and they didn't get the permit.
Mm-hmm.
Well, what's? Well.
Like I say, I think some of it is just a misunderstanding of the process and what has to happen, so. So, all right, we have that before us. Is there a, a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve and accept the Planning Commission's, uh, findings of facts.
Right.
I'll, I'll second.
Let me have a second. All right, any more discussion? Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. That's all that I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, on to the administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I sent you, on your, on your desk, you have two-page summary for each of the two proposals we've received, um, to provide consulting services to help us review, um, the vacancy and the operation of the Auditor Treasurer's Office. Um, generally, the intention is to, get a survey of the staff and the offices that im- are impacted and work with the Auditor Treasurer's Office so that we can make recommendations about the position, positions that we need to hire for that office, um, and I would, both of these will give us the opportunity to have a report, um, probably about the first of March, that we would have a report to make recommendation on how to, how to proceed with filling that position or that position or those positions. And then they both provide opportunities to have staff support, um, for the existing staff to help us make sure that we are not falling behind, that we're implementing, um, the best practices. There are a significant number of daily, weekly, monthly, and annual items that have, uh, that need to be primarily from the financial side, that need to be addressed in, in that office. When I go back and look at our audits going back to twenty fifteen, we have had findings, um, significant findings, um, related to our processing of, of, um, of the financial information for the county. I know that we have more accounts than we need to manage for the county, and I know that we're not using our current accounting system IFS to its fullest potential, so that is, the opportunity here is to move forward with, um, with some help and direction from other people that we, that we change the operation so that when we bring somebody in, we bring them into an opportunity to be successful. The, I, I guess I'll, I'll stop and ask questions there. You got an email this morning with the first page of that report and the seventy-five pages of the two proposals, um, but generally, do you have any questions about the, the current status and operation of the Auditor's Office and the staff with it, and I? We've been working through, the spring elections are well, they're, they're well in planning between the staff working in the office. Uh, we have a meeting, we've scheduled meetings, and we're working with Tyler to make sure that the tax statements are out on time this year and correct. We're working with compliance issues with the Department of Revenue and other offices that that office works with. Uh, we're changing, as you can see, we're changing, um, who has access to accounts and having some redundancy in that that we didn't have previously, so I think we're making good progress. But the only way to overcome the, the history of the deficiencies and how that office works is for us to actually review the operations, come up with a plan, start the plan, and then hire staff that are gonna be able to manage that plan going forward. I've had conversations with, um, with Josh Stevenson over at Cass County. Fifteen months ago, they were in the same situation we are now, and, um, they're, when I look at our audit report and findings, we have twenty-five pages of audit reports and findings. Um, they had two this year, and that was significantly different from, from previous years, because they, they worked with one of these consultants, they made those changes, they hired the right people, and gave them the support they need. They have ten people in their Auditor's Office. We have had six. I will, I will say that, that one of the findings is very likely that we have not allocated enough resources to all the function of the Auditor's Office to help them be successful, that, that's very likely a finding that we'll, that we'll come up with. I don't think it's gonna be ten, but I don't think it's gonna be six will be the recommendation. Uh, I've also had a conversation with Polk County, who has had a longstanding relationship with one of these consultants, and they're going through a very exhaustive process, but they were in really bad shape. So we've got a, a proposal from Abdo Financials, and we have a proposal from Clifton Larson Allen Accounting Services. The difference between the two of them, other than the initial, um, the initial e- process evaluation or business evaluation, uh, from Abdo is forty-five thousand dollar proposal, and from Clifton Larson Allen is thirty-four thousand, is that the, the method that they propose using to provide additional support is completely different. Abdo profi- suggests providing, uh, an interim finance director on, not onsite, but, but working remotely and working with staff, and that's kinda their dedicated assignment. Clifton Larson Allen suggests that they have a team of people who work at the direction of county leadership on an hourly basis. The monthly cost for Clifton Larson Allen will probably be about a half of what the proposal is from Abdo. If we estimate that this would be a, about a six-month process, the investment with Abdo would be close to three hundred thousand dollars, the investment with Clifton Larson Allen would be half that, and it could be less than that, depending on how it goes, and the Abdo one could be significantly less than that too, but, um, their proposal is thirty thousand dollars a year for an interim finance director.
Do we have this in the budget?
We do not have this in the budget, but we have, what we have in the budget is we have the auditor's, um, the salaries that are not, that we're not paying at this point in time. We don't have three hundred. We can come up with a hundred. The other, the other elements that we will have is, is if we go back and we look at the fact that we've been paying the state to do our financial reports and then do our audit, we are gonna have savings of seventy-five thousand dollars a year in our audit when we get to the point of being able to deliver our own financial statements. So there is ongoing savings, and yet I just told you we'll likely need more staff to be able to do, to completely do the work of this office, so. There will be savings relative to the current cost of providing audit services if we're doing our own financial statements, which would be my goal by the end of this. My goal would be for us to get a, a report like Cass County got that said clean bill of health on a page and a half, and one miniscule finding for a procedural issue that had nothing to do with the way that they're doing their accounting. That would be my preferred outcome, that within two years, we'd have an audit report that looks like that. So, um, my recommendation initially was going to be, um, that we work with Abdo because they have great references. I had a great interaction and opportunities to have conversations with them, uh, and then last night, I finally had an opportunity to meet with, directly with the people who would be providing services on behalf of Clifton Larson Allen, and I am convinced that they can deliver the same, the same outcomes for less than half the cost, and, um, they've got people in both organizations that are, that have experience working in Minnesota counties, that have experience working with our financial systems, that have experience in supporting and correcting these issues. We're not the only county that has, um, reporting problems or internal problems or, um, and, and truthfully, it, it's not a problem, as long as we were willing to continue to pay the state to do our financial reports. I believe that that's something we ought to be doing ourselves. I think that's the best way to, um, the best way to serve the public and the public interest relative to the dollars that we manage on their behalf is for us to have full control of that daily, weekly, monthly, and annually through that audit process. So that would be my recommendation, is that we, um, that we sign an agreement with Clifton Larson Allen to do the study. They are saying they would be able to start the study the second week of February, that they would deliver preliminary results within four to five weeks, that they would have staff assistants available to us starting the week of January twentieth so that we can meet the deadlines and the timelines of that office. Uh, we just identified that we're gonna have a land sale, and I don't think we have anybody in that office that knows statutorily what the responsibilities are for that, uh, but if we have them on board, they'll have somebody that will know what that is and can walk our, our financial staff through that appropriate documentation and a much more significant documentation with the new statute than there used to be. And the dispersment, the handling and dispersment of funds is significantly different, so I was going to ask you to delay that by a month, but I believe we can deliver that on the February twenty-seventh, twenty-first that you agreed to, so.
I'm assuming Clifton Larson and Allen is gonna have a significant onsite presence during a lot of this?
And that is, uh, that is the other reason I'm making that recommendation. Um, the, the key personnel that they are recommending that they allocate to this are within an hour and a half, two hours of our location, and their intention is to spend a good amount of time here doing the assessment, doing the interviews, and Abdo is, um, their proposal is to do things remotely, which we know can work, um, but and, and, and like, like I said, it's Friday, I had a conversation with the administrator from Polk County. He had just gotten done with his, uh, bi-weekly check-in with Abdo, um, and he was very comfortable that they were making progress. Abdo was making regular reports to the board on the amount of money they're, they're spending, but they're spending a lot of money. And, uh, I think we can, I think we can do this without spending that amount of money. Cass County worked with Abdo last year, but they contracted them on an hourly basis. They didn't bring in somebody to act as interim, primarily because they had the other staff in place that were managing those things, and some of their processes were already in place.
So the reporting that needs to happen, is that some, something that we can do based upon all the software and the information that we have now? We're just not utilizing it fully?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Um, I know that when I, when I looked, I know that we have more than twenty bank accounts, and I know that we only have two of them in IFS, only two of them are being balanced. The, the two primary cash accounts are being reconciled in IFS, but nothing else is. Everything else is being reconciled in Excel spreadsheets off-book, which is what creates all the need for the tying out and the financial reports and the financial reporting that the state has been doing on our behalf. And IFS has the ability, um, once we get the report, to clean things up, to reduce the number of accounts that we have to what we need to meet statutory, I mean, we have to separate some monies, but most of the time you can do that within the accounting system and not by actually putting it at a different bank.
So is it because we, we've never fully learned IFS?
IFS does not have training. Everybody that knows IFS has known IFS, and they've always used it the way that they've always used it. And, um, and I, I will not put this all on our previous assessor, I will, I will say that she inherited that situation, because if all those accounts were in the system and being reconciled, they would have been in the system before she got here, right? But they're not. As a matter of fact, they weren't added until twenty eighteen. So, um, we weren't, we were not using the tool in the way that it was meant to be used.
That's what it reminds me of, you know, you spend all this money for a piece of software, whatever it costs you annually, and people still continue to do things the same old way they've always done it with the workarounds or the patches because that's what they know, instead of investing the time in learning the new tool, which will make you more efficient and make things flow better.
The, the outcome of this is we will like, we will have a t- access, either way, we'd have access to a team of people who will make those recommendations, go into our system, make those changes, set up those accounts, and the procedures for balancing and reconciling, and then teach our staff how to do it. Because nobody's gonna have the ability to catch up from that much of a backlog, um, from within the staff that we currently have. And talking with Josh yesterday, he's like, you're in a different situation than we are, you're not gonna be able to get by with what we did. I don't think we need to do what, what Polk is doing. Um, I think there's a middle ground, and based on my conversation with Clifton Larson Allen's staff yesterday, I believe they can meet that middle ground for us, and, and I'm hoping that it's the hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the next twelve months, we'll, we'll get this done.
Does CLA know IFS well then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. They both, they both have staff who have worked in that. As a matter of fact, CLA has some of Cass County's former staff working, working for them right now.
Being that Jeff has a, he has a good understanding and an overview of what the problems are, so he can definitely watch this process and guide this process well, um, I think it makes sense to go with his recommendation for the lower-cost one then, I think. Knowing what you know and what you're, kinda have an idea of what kinda end result we're hoping to get, uh, I think we can get there that way without spending twice as much money.
And I also think that if, if someone is here present, that will in turn allow a certain amount of IFS training to happen automatically through this transition, so that will be very helpful for all the staff that's involved.
And my, my efforts to this point have been to create redundancies. Even though we have Skylar working primarily on the tax side, Marie primarily working on the accounting side, I have them both in on all of the training sessions. When we're talking, when we're having a tracks, tax training session, Marie's joining us. When we're doing stuff with IFS and the accounting, I'm having Skylar in there. They need to be able to support each other in that. They need to be able to support each other in that, in those roles. And we didn't have any redundancy in that office. They didn't have access to the, to the functions in those systems that they needed to do the basic, to complete basic functions in both of those processes. They have both jumped in and taken on more work. They have both put in extra hours. I'm, I'm keeping an eye on the not, not crazy hours. But I said, if you guys need to work an extra five or eight hours a week to make sure the things, that we're getting things done, you don't have to ask me. Just use your best judgment and get that done. And, and they are, they are doing it. And, and as I had a conversation previously, I would, I would anticipate that we would use the general government committee, the standing committee of this group, to kind of act as the sounding board and get the preliminary reports and the, and the updates from this process. And that we would bring anything to the board relative to when we're gonna, if we're going to change the organizational structure, if we need to consider adding, if we need to spend things that we haven't, hadn't identified spending, we'd bring those things to the full board, but I would like to use the general government committee as the sounding board for this, which may mean, in the first quarter of this year, we might have to meet more than, more than monthly. But those, those meetings could be remote, updates on the process.
This clearly makes sense to do now because of the vacancy we have. I mean, if we, if we just filled that position and didn't do any of this, we'd be right back in the same spot we are. So, you know, we might, it makes sense to do this, and we will have most of the funding to pay for it.
And my intention is to,
While we have the vacancy.
Is to post a vacancy for an auditor as soon as we, as soon as we can confirm that. And I would guess by this timeframe, we'd be looking about the end of February before we'd do that. We are also looking at other, other structures. Cass County has an auditor and they have a CFO. And, and we had the bit of, bit of the conversation about the auditor treasurer, who were separate offices, then they were combined. But there is getting to be more of a business need to have the treasury, the finance portions separated from the auditor's portion. It also addresses the concern that we always have in our audit of not having separation of duties, right? If we've got people doing this portion of the financial thing, and then over here, the CFO or the, or the finance director are just doing these portions of it, we have better separation of duties than we, than we currently do. So I'm kind of holding out. I'm gathering information. I'm gathering job descriptions from DDA, from other counties who have made changes. I just got Josh's organizational structure and job descriptions this week. We'll have a lot of information, and if we use the general government as the sounding board for updates prior to bringing decisions to the full board, we will have to increase the number of meetings. Monthly won't do it, but I, they could be, those could easily be video conference updates or, and/or in-person, remote or flexible. But there will be a lot of, a lot of updates and a lot of things happening in the first eight to 10 weeks of this process.
So you believe Hubbard County is large enough to have a separate chief financial officer?
Yes, I do. We are the, we're the same size number of employees as Cass. We're within 10, 15% of the total overall budget. And when you compare the size of, of counties, we are at the same, we're almost as big as Crow Wing, based on the, based on the total, based on their total budget and number of employees that they have. I believe that the real challenge is, is that we have not, we do not have enough staff to do all the functions in that office in our current model. And I don't know if it's one more or two more. I don't think it's four more. But the only way to really know how to do that is, is to do this survey and an assessment and, and come up with some recommendations.
I just wonder, you know, you make, you get the full use of your accounting program if, you know, that's going to reduce workload right there.
This process should tell us that.
It, it will, it will and it, it will and it won't. We, when you look at Cass County's model, they have a, a tax specialist, they have an accounting specialist, they have, and I'm just doing this off the top of my head, they have, they have four different specialists for the four areas of operation within their, the auditor's office. Elections, tax, accounting. And they have four of them at that level. And then they have four deputies, like the ones that we have that work downstairs, that work with the public and interact with people on a daily basis. And then they have a finance director, and then they have an auditor. We don't have anyone specializing in any one of those areas. We don't, we don't have a tax specialist. On the property record side, we have two, we have two property technicians who are analysts, who are doing all the work and doing all the calculations in behind and, and keeping all that. That's a very complicated compliance, legal, data, and software position that makes the software that we have to provide those services work. And we don't have anybody in that office that has that level of understanding that our property record staff have of how to use that software. They use that software to get those values to this point, and then they hand it off to nobody. And we've been doing what we can with that. IFS to be done correctly would mean, and, and this, this office should be supporting and cooperating and coordinating with the, the highway department and the human services department and the payroll department, and supporting them in ways that they have not been. And that's why this evaluation will involve meetings and re, and reports and surveys from people in all of those offices as well, because we need to understand what they're getting and what they're not getting. Over the last year and a half, I, I have a long list of things that, that human services and the highway have asked me, when they get to the point of not getting something from the auditor's office that they need to do their jobs. And I, I had no way to deal with it. Well, now we're going to throw it all into one basket. We'll sort it out, and we'll identify how to support those, those needs. But yeah, it, we all thought 30 years ago that software and paperless was going to save time and money. And the truth of the matter is, is that the compliance, the GASB, the, the statutory requirements, the state mandates just continue to add to the workload that we have to, that we have to deal with.
You couldn't do it without the software now.
You couldn't do it without the software now. No. Eighty of the 87 counties use IFS through Tri-Man systems. We don't really have a choice to take that next step. Stearns, Sherburne, St. Louis, they're all using an enterprise-grade accounting system, but they're paying $500,000 a year to do it. We're not in the same school. We're going to have to use IFS until Tri-Man comes up with another solution. And that means we gotta, we gotta get all of our staff trained in their specific areas, and we need to have several people in that office that are very comfortable with the overall operation and how things work. Day-to-day, they're really good, but like, like I said, our system is not, our accounts are not set up so that they can be reconciled. And if you're not reconciling your cash accounts to your GL balances, you can never run financial reports. And the bank accounts need to be reconciled with the GL accounts so that when you write a check, it corresponds and correlates and reconciles to the actual transactions hitting the bank. There are things that we can do within operations. We are still writing checks from one department to the next on a regular basis. Not necessary. It has been the little thing in the back of my mind that can go away with all this. The bigger thing will be, we're doing our own financial reports, and our audit process will be done on time. It'll be done correctly, and it'll be done with very few marks. That'll be the, the measure, and I would expect that, at least by the '26 audit, that we would have this corrected. I don't know if we'll turn it around in one year. We'll get better in one year, but it should be corrected in two.
All right. We have the two proposals, and is there anybody ready to make a motion?
Looking to, for a motion to approve?
I'd be looking for a motion to, to approve contracting with Clifton Larson Allen to do the assessment at the $34,000 and to have a budget of up to, I would say, $100,000 for the staff support over the next six-month period.
So moved.
Right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carried.
I was fully convinced that I was going to give you another recommendation until I had my meeting last night. And I have very high confidence in the, in the staff that I spoke with last night, and I have, am very, was very concerned about the cost of the other proposal. So I'm glad that, I really feel confident that we can go this way and get this done.
We would have a hard time coming up with that.
Yes. I don't-
Have some experience with CLA, too, through heritage, and it's, it's been positive.
We, we do. The only other update that I would have is, is that Thursday, I'm going to be in St. Paul at that ad hoc committee that's been put together to evaluate county program aid and mandate conversations, unfunded mandate conversation. There's a group of about 20 people who have been put together on that ad hoc committee, and we're going to go in and I will provide you an update of that first meeting because I think it's going to be really important that I hear from you what our priorities are, that I hear from our department heads, and that I'm able to bring those things into that conversation. I know that a significant portion of our mandate come in the human services department. And a lot of the funding relative to out-of-home placements, to mental health issues, those things that can get out of control on a daily basis really fast are things where we need to negotiate a better, a better payment system with the state and better access things with the state. There are also two, two issues that are not necessarily on that same bucket that I think are really important to bring up, and, and they're kind of pet peeves of mine. One is, you know, for 25 years, we've had the state general sales tax, and our, our seasonal rec people have not paid on our local school tax levies, right? They've paid into the state general sales tax. That state general sales tax was initially identified to be redistributed back out to the counties where they were losing revenue. And then, then in the first or the second year, they took that money and they said, no, we're going to use it for something else. So if you want proper, local property tax relief, you advocate for a change in how those state, state general tax dollars are collected, the amount of dollars that are collected, and then how they're distributed and used, to go back to what was initially identified in 1999, when I think when that was first done. That's, that's the biggest one.
That's a huge dollar amount.
It is a huge dollar amount. And, and since that has happened, and since that amount, dollar amount not collected by the state general, I, that pool of the state general sales tax has not gone up the same way that local levies have gone up. Everybody in Minnesota that has a second home is paying a lower tax rate on their second home than on their first home.
Where's the money gone?
I will actually have to look.
Because that's-
It's been, it's been used for other general functions, and it hasn't been redistributed.
It could be, it could be hard to fix.
It could be very hard to fix.
There's no money.
It could be very hard to fix. There's also the history of the, in the 70s, the seasonal homes paid four times what Homestead paid. And even 25 years ago, they paid one and a half percent instead of 1% as the basis. And that's been changed to 1%, and then the state general sales tax, and that's how second homeowners get a discount. The only reason, the only time and place and reason that they don't is because with the Homestead exclusion, they, they pay on 100% of the value and not the reduced value of the first $400,000, but...
I would caution advocating too hard for that, though, because,
No.
because that is our economy now, is our, is our summer residence, basically. And it's becoming more and more that every day, that if, if all of a sudden we go back to their taxes are four times higher than it was before, that's going to have a significant impact on our economy.
If, if the, it, it can't go to 4%. It can't go four times. It probably can't even go to one and a half times.
Right.
But if that state general sales tax was collected in such a way that it kept pace with inflation, and a portion of it was returned back to the counties, or was put into the pot for additional CPA, or whatever, there's a, there's a way to balance that. The Homestead application really doesn't provide a discount for people homesteading in Minnesota anymore, which is, which was never the intention. And yes, it's obviously complicated, but, but my intention would be to report back to you and gather information from the department heads and from you before going back to the second meeting. They're doing those in person so that we can actually look at each other on the table. We're going, we're having it at the AMC meeting space. So I will be out of the office on Thursday doing that.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Jeff? Just the only question I have is, where are we at with the jail, the bids and everything?
The bid opening is going to be on Thursday, and we will get you an update before that, but the action for approving the bids will be on the, in two weeks. The action for identifier, for calling for the sale of the bonds of the up to $3 million will also be in two weeks. And we are having our next, bid opening is Thursday. Our next progress meeting is the 16th. And then we effectively have six weeks before we're going to start construction here in the government center. So we're going to have to start thinking about relocation plans and temporary work locations and, and finalize the budgets. We're waiting to finalize some of the budgets, the FFNE budgets, until we get the bids in, what, what the scope and scale of that is going to be. But you will be having updates on that on a regular basis as well. Scott and, because I'm gone Thursday, Scott and Cory are going to be attending the bid opening. If one of you is interested in attending that, it's at 2:00 here. We just need to make sure that we have somebody from the county at that, at that meeting, and Scott and Cory have both said that they would be there. But if one of you is interested in attending that, it would be.
Right. Is there anyone interested?
I have Prime West.
Okay. I don't think I can make it Thursday.
Thursday at 2:00. And we, we do have it handled. You will all get a, spreadsheet that shows what the results of all the bids and all the tabs and everything are within a week. You'll definitely have it before the agenda for the meeting from two weeks now come, two weeks from now comes out.
Right here, right?
Right here. Yeah.
I can probably make it.
Okay. Is there anything else? All right. Committee reports. Does someone want to start?
Sure.
It's been quite a while.
Let's see. I'll do the HRDC first. We had it early last month. It was our Christmas meeting. Some of the spouses were there. So we kind of went over the, let's see. Sean presented on the Headwaters Regional Finance Corporation. There is Hammer Fit here in Park Rapids that he's been helping with. Let's see. Transportation. Now, this being a month ago, and I didn't take notes. We talked about the opportunities that are available in the, in, in the region. Let's see. Went over our comp plan. Our Bemidji needs help with, with their comp plan, and they're going to be contracting with the HRDC to do that. And then other, you know, updating our phone systems and, let's see. Safe routes to school. Grant went to Lake of the Woods this time. So a lot of it, region-wise, but there wasn't anything really specific to Hubbard County. And had a Northwestern Juvenile Center Board Officers meeting. We went over the financial reports and approved, went over the superintendent's expenses. And we went, talked about the, the programming and, and products and facility updates. We do, we are actually a school also for the student, or the kids that are there, and a lot of them are doing very well. We do, we are actually a school also for the student or the kids that are there and a lot of them are doing very well. Got a I notice with a lot of the committees and stuff, we, they have a hard time finding auditors. So our long-term auditor that's been auditing the stuff for Northwestern Minnesota Juvenile Center sent us a new contract. It was a modest increase, so we approved that. We went over the per diems that we are charging counties to use our services and how they compared with, we had raised ours, what was it, like twenty-five to thirty percent this last year. We went over our rates, current rates and what other juvenile centers in the state are at and now all of their rates are higher than our rates. Let's see, went over like the end of the year stuff, like we did today, board calendar. Looked at those things there, board appointments. I know it was noted on our committee report or committee list here too, that Steve's term was up, but I'm sure you're still on it because we approved the list today. And that was about it for that. I'm trying to think, it seems like there was one other one here for December. Oh, the emergency communication board. The one where everybody talks about stuff that I don't understand. The lingo. Let's see, I did take some notes. Bussies, what are, so David, what is a a bussy? We talked about November, there was zero sites with ten plus
Oh, busy.
Bizies?
Yeah, if depending on the each site has the ability to handle so many connections at one time, if there's too many going on at one time, you'll get a slight busy.
Oh, okay.
So they they monitor that all the time to see if it gets too high, that they have to allocate either A, more bandwidth or something to the site to correct for it. So, yeah, usually you don't see white earth, sometimes can have quite a bit and but other than that, or not white earth is, which one is it, Menomen or over near Wolf Lake? I think Wolf Lake is the one that occasionally, because that's one of the smaller sites.
Okay.
That depending if something happens over in that and it can have some bizies for a while, but it's never risen to the point where it's becomes a detriment.
Okay.
But they keep monitoring at all times.
Because they had mentioned prior to November, Felton and Big Fire were two places that had over ten.
Yeah.
Where's Big Fire at?
That's not too bad, really. I can't remember exactly what their threshold is though, but they, that's why they monitor it so they can address it if it gets too many.
Let's see, they went over, you know, some funding issues and stuff like that and the budget that was given. PSAP committee, this is one of those where when I first started on the committee, I would have said the PSAP. But of course, the committee people, they call it PSAP, you know, so it's one of those little things. They're going between, between a committee or a workshop or they're looking into the bylaws. So they wanted to know, they, and I believe they ended up going with a PSAP committee. And it was put on the January agenda. Let's see, and they talked about updating our membership form and making sure the contact information was correct. They added in North Dakota, three hundred and ninety-one armor IDs. I'm assuming that that's for like sheriff's cars and and stuff like that. And then CBP, eight hundred. So they, they already okayed, as I remember, if I say this correct, they had seven hundred new armor IDs okayed, but they needed to add another hundred for a total of eight hundred new armor IDs. And otherwise, it seemed like things are, it seems like a good group. People working together to get the the problem solved with the emergency communication boards, which affects all of us if we're in an emergency, so. I think it's a very good committee to to be on.
One of the biggest problems is that, just like any other government entity, you know, they created this network, which functions very well. It's amazing how well armor works. I mean, Corey or a deputy could be in downtown Minneapolis, bring up his handheld and talk to Hubbard County. Like he split. So it's amazing how it networks through and they never thought about the aging of the equipment on the entire network and replacing it.
So I know years, this would be years ago when I was on the Bemidji Rural Fire Association and they were talking about converting over to armor and I know there was a lot of arguments back and forth. And it, at the time, I was actually thinking, well, it seems like armor is pretty expensive for what it was. But now, twenty years later, it's like, it makes sense.
Right, and I I I think most of the reservations now are are on it. You know, they they were kind of the slow draggers for a while. They were kind of doing a hybrid thing for a while. But yeah, pretty much everybody's converted now, but it's expensive. I mean, the radios are expensive and the backbone and the infrastructure is really expensive and the state kind of didn't re they were using the nine-one-one fees to help initially pay for it and I don't believe they've re-upped those, so that, that's the struggle is all this backbone at some point is going to have to be upgraded and replaced. How do you fund that? You can't afford to do it as a county alone, so.
And that's one of those fees I thought that should have stayed in place.
And then of course, there's a big negotiation now with Motorola again and a new contract for maintenance and stuff too that's coming up. Is expensive too.
And that's what I had.
Okay, thank you. Tom, do you have anything?
Well, I filled in for you for the Lakes, Lakes Lake River Waterhead One Plan. In addition to approving the next phase three funding, they gave a presentation on accomplishments from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, which is a pretty big list. I got the file in front of me. Maybe it'd be easier to just get a copy to everybody who would want one.
I'm curious, I'll, okay, I'll, I'll send it to Jeff and then he can send it all to you. And that'd be the quickest way to go through it. They, they, quite a bit of the work that they've, they've done with their funds. He might be interested in it. Anyways, that's the only one I've got.
Okay, all right. I don't have anything that wasn't covered anywhere else, so I won't take any more time. Jared?
Dave, we'll cover HLDC and Heritage, I'm assuming. I attended the last manager's meeting as far as board chair goes. And just really encourage those that were there to utilize employee assistance. And then Jeff and Gina also expounded on that, that it's not only for personal things that we're questioning how to handle, but also for supervisory things and dealing with staff and so it's just a great tool that we all have that we can use. It's a benefit for the employees, so we have good discussion on that.
And and families.
And families, yes. Thank you for that, yeah.
All right, David?
HLDC, we slowly continue to fill the vacancies in Pine Crest slower than we would like, so we we approved a marketing budget to more heavily market, market it, so we'll see what happens here in the next two or three months. So interesting, you know, we do the housing study and it shows all this stuff like we kind of mentioned in the EDA, but it's not filling as fast as, you know, the former HRA ones did anyhow, so. Of course, some of that is because of who we're targeting in that complex, so. So we'll continue to work on that. Heritage, nothing changed as far as the star ratings. We had three hires in November, two terminations. No open FTEs, no agency contracts again, fifteen different applications. Our retention is at seventy percent, our turnover is forty-two percent and our employee, number of employees is one nineteen. Previous month was one seventeen. The Census in Heritage Manor was twenty-four. Cottage is seventeen and the living center was thirty-eight. EBITDA for Heritage Manor was forty-one thousand four hundred ninety-six. The cottages was seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-six. Heritage Living Center was eighty-eight thousand six hundred and eighty-three for a total combined EBITDA of one hundred forty-seven thousand four hundred and five. And I believe that aligned, so we didn't quite have the November thing because Vivvy was going through a software change with their combining with the other company. But it just showed up in the email and it looked like it aligned pretty closely to the exact same numbers, so. So so far, so good. Again, a net, a net profit in November also, that there was in October. Don't expect that going forward though, because when the rates change as the year progresses along, it's going to get tougher and tougher. So our goal is to hope to just break even this year would be our big goal.
One of the things we did talk about there, because Census was down and I was asking Stephanie about that and she said it this was for short-term stays and she said it, it appears that people had surgery options or whatever. A lot of it was done in the summer and it wasn't only Heritage, but it's across the board for facilities. So it was just a slower time of the year for that.
Okay, um, if there's nothing else, just Ted, I wanted to mention to you, I will not be at Northwest Juvenile. I'll be in the cities at training, so. So don't elect me as chair, please, or president. I was afraid of that, so.
And Steve, if I could just mention, because I wrote down the dates for MRC for Steve. I plan to be at all those meetings and I know Steve will have the vote, but that's just a committee I really enjoy, so. I I would encourage you guys, if you can attend, to do that, but if not.
Yeah, appears the majority, majority of them are all Zoom.
Yeah, for the first half of the year.
Yeah, there's three that are in person later in the year, so.
I like that one, but I have got a number of other ones and I don't want to over-busy my schedule.
Yep, yep.
All right, the meeting's to note, of course, on here, the the leadership essentials, I'll be attending all of that. And then there's the legislative conference coming up. I don't know if anybody planned on attending that in February. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Second? Oh, you got it?
Oh, oh, you're, you can have the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.